Good evening and welcome to the Ferguson City Council meeting for July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. We will have our opening ceremony. Meeting is now called to order. Let us stand for a silent prayer and the pledge allegiance to the flag. The pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Pittman, could you please call a row?
Councilwoman Noah?
Here.
Councilwoman Palmer?
Here.
Councilwoman Cassoff?
Here.
Councilwoman Robinette?
Here.
Councilwoman Lipka?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here. A quorum is present. At this time, we will move to our public comments. We ask that you come to the podium, state your name and your address. There is a time clock right here where each person who comes to the podium has three minutes and three minutes only. We ask that you don't go back and forth with the staff because all your concerns will be taken care by the staff when they have heard all of your concerns. At this time, Clerk Pittman, who do we have as our first person to render a comment?
First, we have Shirley Emerson. Shirley Emerson?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm here tonight to remind everyone of the public meeting that we're going to have regarding the American Rescue Plan Act funds. That meeting will take place on Thursday, July the twenty-fifth, at six-thirty at the Urban League at ninety-four twenty West Florissant. And this is an opportunity for Ferguson officials to explain the policy regarding the managing of the ARPA funds, how the policy was drafted, and to enable Ferguson citizens to ask questions and dialogue with city officials regarding the funds. Now, I appreciate the responses that I have received from some of you, and I want you to know that others can still send your responses. Thank you.
Thank you. LeVar Mitchum?
Council, as always, I come before you as a concerned citizen. My concerns this evening are council members' conduct toward citizens and continuing to ignore that you all are held to a higher esteem and standard. I continue to reference the Code of Conduct that you all passed in April, two thousand and twenty-one. And it has come to my attention that at the council meeting on June twenty-fifth, Councilwoman Lipka, Councilwoman Williams, were very disrespectful to Ms. Erica Brooks. I would like to be clear, we all should be respectful of one another. We as citizens should be respectful to you as you should be to us. But this came to my attention, and if we're gonna need to be respectful of one another, we really do. Councilwoman Lipka, I did verify this, that Ms. Brooks were both shouting at each other. And Councilwoman Williams, I was unable to verify what you said, but I think it's important to state what it was said that you Councilwoman Cassoff? I was able to verify that you told Mr. Alan Mueller that Councilwoman Palmer had a spotless record, and it was like he was saying, he has a spotless record. I'd like to say this with all sincerity. None of you, not one of you, have an automatic pass or is excluded from citizens being able to ask you questions and hold you accountable. Nobody's excluded from that. The other thing is, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars was given to the FNIP committee. I'll be obedient, Mayor.
Thank you. Erica Brooks?
My name is Erica Brooks. I was here present at a meeting on the eleventh when the gavel was hit and Mayor Jones hit the gavel saying, stated motion carries bill number seventy-two eighty-two was removed from the agenda. We didn't specify indefinitely or what, but however, the motion was removed from the agenda tonight, meaning that there were gonna be further discussions about bill number seventy-two eighty-two. On June twenty-fifth, I voiced my, I came back to voice my concerns about Rachel St. Pierre's presentation being, you know, having discriminatory practices. And it was specifically said by Linda Lipka about the reason why they actually put that FNIP, well, reestablished it. Now, this is one of the comments she made the night of the eleventh. She said, honestly, I don't know, like, I do not like fifty-one point eight percent renters. That's why the council and previous councils have FNIP get reestablished. That is why the property restoration program was designed in our council lifetime, meaning that she does not want renters in this community. And that was what I was trying to stress to David Williams that night, being that she constantly told me that David don't know about anything because he hasn't been here long enough. But the point is, that presentation of accreditation housing certificate, housing provider certificate, the way it was set up, it was discriminatory in the first place because it don't look at renters. It didn't look at the whole population of Ferguson to know where it's been affected as far as the revenue because you do have homeowners that you're gonna set up a whole plan for accreditation for people as renters. It's gonna, like I said, be a downfall for the renters because if the landlords are not able to financially support the codes and ordinances because they're financially strapped, that money's gonna fall somewhere. And I tried to tell Dave, when he told me I wasn't talking about shit, when I turned around and also Linda Lipka got in my face as I turned around and saw him smiling and putting on entertainment for Heather and Mike and Larry Robinette because I said those people were the ones that got you in office. So I see you putting on the sideshow. So he said, no, I'm not. So Linda hopped in my face, hopped in my face right there and blocked my path to walking out of here. I asked twice, get out my face. I asked the detective at the time. Said to her and to him, I know if it was me doing something to you, if it was me doing something to you, you would arrest me right now. I would truly like it if the city, if the city members would do something for her. I would appreciate it if you all would do something for her, her actions and his actions for being out of order according to your Code of Conduct. No, no, because like I said, they're not above the law.
Ms. Brooks, your time is up.
I know my time is up, but I hope that you all do something for someone approaching me in my face like that.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Thank you. Deborah Moore? Ms. Brooks? Ms. Moore, Deborah Moore? Could you please come to the podium? Your name was called.
Okay. Deborah Moore, Northland Hills subdivision. I'm gonna start with the good, the bad, and then the ugly. The good, I wanna thank, first of all, I just wanna thank the young lady who was on dispatch for the Fourth of July. She took some hits from a lot of us. We know it was not her fault, but she handled it very professionally and dealing with us. I did place a phone call back to her apologizing for the tone, but we had, we had an issue. It was not dealt with by the officers that continued to show up. The other good, we have criminal in our subdivision who is causing some issues for us, city manager. I called again to dispatch because I wanted, I had some questions on how to handle him before I catch a case. So he did walk us through some things, and I shared that with the other residents. You know, I live on Highmont, Highway forty-four. We almost had a severe, and I mean a severe collision a couple of weekends ago with these racing. Now they're racing three cars deep. A young lady was coming, because I'm out early. A young lady was coming in her SUV, and if she hadn't have pulled over, it would have been head-on collision. And she sat there for a while because my heart was pounding and so was hers. We've gotta figure out, I don't think those speed bumps are gonna help Highmont. I think we gotta figure out something else as far as surface streets and taking care of that. Code enforcement, I've noticed them a lot more. I see the street department every morning, but I've noticed them driving through a lot more, but we need their eyes to be looking because I still have the question, have we been rezoned? Because we have all of these auto repair shops, they're popping up everywhere all over the community. We've gotta get a handle on that because I'm pretty much sick of that. The ugly, and I hope I don't run out of time. I understand it's FNIP. Someone said that they don't wanna hear that anymore. You're gonna hear it until this whole situation gets handled. So if you don't wanna hear it, I suggest you put earplugs in your ear. And if you were talking to me, I know who the person was that made the racial comment. I don't need FNIP. But there are residents, if they need it, they should be able to apply for whatever those funds are and get it without going through all of this nonsense. The comment that was made was racial and it was disrespectful. If you don't wanna hear the term racial, I suggest you move on because we live in Ferguson. We live in the United States. And if you think the United States is not racist, I don't know where you come from. That's all. Thank you, Ella.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. David Johnson?
Before you start deleting my time, I would like to say, thanks for turning the volume down because there's too much echo in here. Now, I would like to say I wasn't here before the last meeting, but from what I understood, it's supposed to have been about putting an island down West Florissant to eliminate speed. Well, I think that money could go to hiring some police. You could hire ten more police for twenty-some years for what that's gonna cost. And I think that'd be more helpful for Ferguson than the island down the middle of West Florissant. I was supervisor for fifteen years for the city of St. Louis building streets. I built Riveteria from Alabama to Morgan Ford. I had my own construction company for forty-some years. If you put some more police on and fine these people for speeding and even take their license and even put them in jail for the way they go down the street like they're on a highway. And I know it's gonna hurt somebody's pocketbook, but it'd help our city. So I would ask you to consider putting more police on and giving them a raise than to be putting some concrete down the middle of the street, making one way east and one way west. That's what I'd like to see. And I've been here thirty years. I wanna ask the question. I hope y'all gonna rebuttal on this. How many people have been killed on West Florissant between Genesee, I mean Lucas and Hunt and Chambers Road? And I think we should be also given the opportunity of time to rebuttal questions that are asked. And so far, I'm not hearing any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is it Rena or Renee Johnson?
Good evening.
Hi, Ms. Johnson.
This is in reference to speeding, not only on Highmont, I think Kirk. We've had instances where cars have ran into our yard, taken bushes along with them, ran into, lost control on Kirk, ran into our driveway, pushed the car into the garage, swung around and took a bush with them. So I'm pretty sure we need to do something about speeding in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Carl Grant?
How y'all doing? Good evening.
Good evening.
I have three concerns. I've been at Ellsworth, eight thirty-four Ellsworth, for fifteen years. I've been complaining about doing the streets of Ellsworth, and everybody in the neighborhood told me to come up here and please explain to y'all. Can you please put us on the list? Because my great-great-granddaughter cannot ride a bike with all them potholes and a lot of people getting their tie rods, ball joints and everything, big potholes. So if y'all have any time, go by there and drive down Ellsworth. And the last thing I have to say about the shooting over there by the North Florissant, by the car wash, because they shoots at night, maybe after twelve o'clock, one to two o'clock. But they've been doing it for a while, but the police officer been doing a good job. After they shoot, you'll see the police officer drive by, and they look into that as well. And that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian Shropshire?
Good evening, Council. Good evening, citizens. I wanna speak on our officers that are being hired. I'm on the citizens' hiring or the citizens' review panel for the interviews. In the last past couple of weeks, we had one gentleman come in for the academy, and we had another gentleman come in from out of town for an interview that possibly will be hired. We're looking at something around thirty-eight officers, if I'm not mistaken now. We're moving forward. Be patient with us. We're interviewing as many as we can that apply. Everybody doesn't become a police officer at one time. Some have to go to the academy, some are already post-certified. One thing I wanna say about respect. You have to give respect to get respected. I'm a very respectful person. I try to be respectful to everybody that I see that I know. I've been with the Ferguson Youth Initiative now for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years. We need a council representative to show up. It's about the youth. Campaign speech, I want the youth. I understand that. But we need you to come to show the youth that the city does care. That's one thing that I'm a big fan of, and there's nothing you can tell me if you haven't been there to see what our youth are about. We have six youth going to college this year. We have one, two youths that got full scholarships that won't have any kind of college bill, tuition bill when they, when they leave college. We have good kids. We will be putting on a more or less a job readiness program within the School of Innovation High School. And like I said, the youth are our future. We can sit here and you're the, you're now, but the future are our youth. And I'd appreciate if we have a council rep just to come sometimes. We're not asking you to come all the time. Come and just see what our youth are about and what we're, what we're doing. You're greatly in what, just what we did with them.
Thank you, Mrs. Shropshire. Jamil Franklin?
Good evening. I wanted to start off by talking about FNIP. Recently, I submitted my third application since being a resident here in Ferguson. Submitted it at the end of June. Larry and his team turned around on it, and I was approved before the new fiscal year. So thanks, Larry, and your team for getting that done. Also wanted to let the board know that I have also offered my services to FNIP because it is a five-on-one C-three organization. I can volunteer and assist as needed just because from looking, from the outside looking in, it appears Larry's swarmed and overworked, and as a volunteer, sometimes you could use help. And I'm more than qualified to assist, willing to give five hours a week if need be, just to make it run smoothly. Also, starting in August, I'll be having workshops independently of FNIP with neighbors at St. Louis County Branch Library here in Ferguson, assisting them with their applications, making sure that the data and everything is filled out to keep them from, you know, being rejected and to also see where the application is in its process toward approval. The next topic I wanted to speak about is what I saw at the last council meeting, what I've seen on social media, the last, I guess, thirty to forty days. We've been hearing the term racism, you know, or racist being thrown around. And I just wanted to give some clarity to the council and remind you that you serve a city that is majority African-American, anywhere from seventy to eighty percent. And we have a unique experience in this country. All of us have experienced racism, bigotry, prejudice, whatever you wanna call it, on some level and because, since we were children. And because of that, we have a certain trauma that we carry and rage that we live with. You know, one of my triggers is when I see black women disrespected. And you know, it never happens when I'm around, and maybe that's the Lord protecting me from me, but it's a trigger based off of the traumas I've experienced growing up here in St. Louis. And I just want all of you to be mindful that this community has a very unique history embedded in trauma and racism. So what may be insensitive, what may be arrogance, may be interpreted as racist. Or it could just be racist because I can't speak if someone's racist. I can only go off my personal experience. You know, I even think about when I first approached this council about serving it just to finish out a term of the former councilman. No one on this board voted for me. So we always say, hey, we wanna be judged on our merit, but everyone looked at my credentials, everyone looked at me, and I wasn't good enough. That's the black experience. You have to be better than good. I learned that in eighth grade from a substitute African-American teacher. They got rid of him the next day when he told us that, but it stuck with me. So I just want you all, and just like now, while speaking, the black folks are looking at me. Not all the white folks on the council are looking at me. In my community, that's disrespectful. Some may say even racist. So if you wanna serve and make Ferguson better, you have to be inclusive of all the people, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. So that's all we have in person. I have one online. Who's online? Amy Randazzo?
Hello. Hi, my name is Amy Randazzo, and I'm the Children's Services Librarian at the Ferguson Municipal Public Library. Earlier this summer, we held a two-part program called Photography for Teens. Led by local photographer, journalist, and documentarian Bradley Brayford, our teen participants were introduced to some basic photography skills, saw how those skills could be applied to document their lives and communities, and learned how to craft a narrative through pictures. To showcase their skills, we are holding a photography exhibition at the library called Through Our Eyes. Photographs taken by our teen participants will be on display. I would like to extend an invitation to everyone listening to come to an opening reception on Thursday, August first, at six P.M. at the library. If you can't make it then, the exhibition will be on display from ten A.M. to five P.M. on Friday, August second, and ten A.M. to three P.M. on Saturday, August third. Please come out and see the fantastic photographs our teens have taken. Finally, and this part I have to say because I'm required, this project is supported by the Institute of Museum and Library Services under the provisions of the Library Services and Technology Act administered by the Missouri State Library, a division of the Office of the Secretary of State. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amy.
The public comment portion of the meeting is closed. We move to the manager's report. City Manager Hampton, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor. It's a pleasure being here tonight. First, I'll call up Police Chief Troy Doyle, and then after that, I will call up Chris Crable from Conset Creek. Chief Doyle?
Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, getting here to provide the report for the police department. Okay, I'm sorry. Go to staffing slide. Staffing. I don't think it's on there. However, we're seventy-six percent staff right now. So that's pretty much static from my last meeting. However, as Mr. Shropshire mentioned, we have three people that's currently in the police academy. We currently have several individuals in the hiring process, one in which I hired yesterday from Cavanaugh Park Police Department. And I believe outside of him, we have like four or five other individuals that are in our hiring process. Those candidates so far look pretty good. However, they still have to complete the background investigation, the polygraph, and the psychological examination. I can't see that. Of course, part one crimes, what we're looking at, the biggest increase you see, okay, there we go. Biggest increase you see on there is a hundred and six percent in burglaries. I don't know if you've been paying attention to the news lately here over the past several weeks. Our city, along with the city of Florissant, Hazelwood, Berkeley, city of St. Louis, been getting hit with a number of business burglaries. That's kind of been a trend lately. We have increased patrols at our business lots at nighttime. The officers have been encouraged to, whenever they have to do a report.
The officers have been encouraged to, uh, whenever they have to do a report, uh, to sit on these business lots at nighttime to try to deter that particular crime. Uh, as a result, we're up seven percent for the year as far as part one crime. And go to number two. Uh, part two crime, again, things, uh, pretty much static from our last meeting. Um, again, we're seeing an increase in, uh, domestic assaults, uh, forgery. And that puts us at twenty-one percent for the, uh, for the year. Two week comparison on, uh, traffic citations. And go to the next one. Year-to-date, uh, we have written, uh, a thousand five hundred and thirty-eight, um, total stops, uh, four hundred and seventy-two, which of those are warnings and a thousand sixty-six are actually traffic citations. As far as the, um, year-to-date comparison, as you can see, uh, we compare the numbers from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Uh, we have increased the number of citations, uh, written in the city. Uh, I want to say that the, uh, overall action was up twelve percent. Uh, as far as citations written for the city, we're actually up fifteen percent, uh, from this time last year. I heard some of the concerns regarding the speeding. Uh, I have noted it. Uh, please understand that, um, during this time of year, it's vacation time, so we are, we don't have the complement of officers out there as we would like. However, I'm extremely happy to report that during this last budget cycle that the council did, uh, pass a budget that would include two dedicated traffic officers for the city. However, I cannot deploy those officers yet because I have to at least make sure that we get some police officers off of field training. Uh, and one thing that I don't want to do is take officers that are already patrolling our neighborhoods and dedicate them to traffic only. So I want to get some of these officers off of probation before I'm able to, uh, fill these traffic cars, but that is on the way. And go to the next one. Those field yields, again, those are the, uh, cars that haven't stopped for, uh, Ferguson Police Department. As you can see, uh, when you compare it to twenty twenty-three, there's no numbers there because we didn't start calculating that until around November of last year when we really started paying attention. So as November comes, approaches this year, you start seeing the comparison numbers, but, um, there's still an issue with us. As far as, uh, community relations events, obviously our department was heavily involved in the Fourth of July celebrations in our city. We also attended the, you can go to the next one, the Forestwood Neighborhood Watch Association Meeting. Uh, and last but not least, we also attended the Park Ridge Neighborhood Picnic, which is the, uh, first meeting that that community had in a while. Um, had a number of residents that show up. Uh, I believe the mayor was there, Councilwoman, uh, Noah showed up. Uh, it was a pretty good event. At this time, I entertain any questions or concerns that this council may have.
Councilwoman Luka. I can just say on behalf of the parks board, they are very pleased with the assistance they've been getting from the police department, off-duty and on-duty. And that the staff of the school, from Joseph, has telling us at their meeting is feels very confident in their ability to do their job because they know they have support of the police department. And we've seen a major decrease in the vandalism because of closing the park down and having the police kind of do a sweep of the parks and make sure people know that it is now closed. So I just want to say thank you for that and we look forward to that becoming more permanent and continue throughout the seasons.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Next, I'd like to call Chris Crable up, uh, consent decree, um, update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to start off saying that I've been working in this position for about a year now, almost a year to the day. And so it's been a year since I did my first update here with the council. But today I'm pleased to report that we have made significant progress, um, since we've started, since I've started with the consent decree. And that's been, uh, thanks to working with the dedicated team that we have now. Um, working alongside Chief Doyle, Pat Washington, Lisa Stevens, Captain Dilworth, Lieutenant Rice. Uh, we've met several key milestones. And we're working to continue to advance our goals as well. Um, some of the major updates are the key updates that I know I've discussed previously, um, here with the council would be our Crime Prevention Plan. Uh, we have submitted the Crime Prevention Plan to the Monitor. So it's already went through the DOJ. It's with the Monitor now. Um, I know some of the members of the monitoring team have already reviewed it. It's waiting for its final review with Natasha. But that should be coming back to us shortly. The Crime Prevention Plan kind of lays out what the chief just did, goes over crime trends that are through the community, um, how the command staff can address it with their, um, for the people who are on the streets, the officers on the streets and kind of just coming up with a layout and a plan of how to, those operations work. So we're happy to be getting the final feedback, um, from the Monitor so we can incorporate that and get that plan locked and rolled out, um, fully through. Uh, the next thing I want to update on, give an update on is the Training Plan. So our Training Plan has been approved, um, to the DOJ and Monitor. And with that Training Plan, of course, it's ever-changing. It's completely being updated almost, you know, weekly as we develop new trainings and have officers be trained and each individual thing gets approved. Um, but they have approved the outline that we created and the, the trainings that have been approved are in that plan. So they're happy with that. So that's something that we didn't have before and that's been done in the last couple of months. So, um, with the help of these, that that's really moved along quickly. Uh, the Community Engagement and Policing Plan, um, we're collaborating with the Neighborhood Police Steering Committee or the MPSC to get that updated. You know, they've dedicated a lot of time recently to that, um, and previously as well to that. So we're really working on getting that completed so we can get that to the DOJ, um, here early this fall. Moving on to the Staffing Plan, I think I've mentioned this before, but, um, with the Staffing Plan, we've reached out and we've got some help from the National Policing Institute. Uh, they're developing, they're helping us develop the plan. There's a lot of math and statistics and, you know, national averages or national standards that go into that. That's not expertise that I specifically have. So we've found a group that will collaborate with us and kind of help develop that plan. Um, we've been meeting with them regularly, supplying inputs, supplying the information that they need to help pull that plan together. That should be, um, ready to go to the Monitor. Just, uh, to supply to the DOJ and then go to Monitor Review once they give us their feedback. And since the council has approved the budget, um, we have started engaging with some of our outside vendors, um, more extensively and and with their work, um, we have, it's been instrumental to developing trainings that are required by the outside vendors, the DOJ Monitor, they have a doing those trainings in person. So we are seeing success with that. So thank you for letting us put that in the budget. Additionally, we have submitted the Court Self-Audit Plan to the DOJ. They've provided feedback on that. We hope to have something ready to move to the Monitor, um, in the coming months. We're also exploring and developing a plan for internal self-audits with the department. Um, there are already some policies that we've created, but things that don't have audits, developing, you know, plans on how to review that information. So we can start that self-assessment internally. Um, and we will get that approved by the DOJ and Monitor. But it's right path internally. And then next thing I want to discuss is that, uh, we're exploring the use of social media, um, and other forms of media to, uh, get information out about the consent decree. Um, I know Ms. Michelle here has worked with Pat and started developing a public information campaign for the courts. Um, we're looking to do that with the police department side of the consent decree as well. Well, you've heard me talk about it for the last year, getting the dashboard up and running on the city's website. Um, there's lots of moving parts with that. We are still working towards that goal. But in the interim, you know, in the more immediate time, where we're looking at using social media to help get more information out. These people have questions and we're going to address those questions. And then in the heart of the consent decree, there is a reliance on our community members, uh, whether they're boards and commissions or they're just the community in general providing input. So I wanted to thank the CRB, the MPSC, um, the Training Committee, and I hope to be working more with the FYI in the future as well, because they're all part of the consent decree and things that we really need to communicate and work with to help develop plans. So, um, I appreciate the work that they've already put in. I know there's countless hours. And I just wanted to say thank you. And I appreciate all the appointments you've done for those boards as well because we've got some good team members on there and we're making progress. And then just so, you know, everyone knows, I know the council's aware and, you know, most of the citizens are well aware as well, but you know, the consent decree has four hundred and like sixty-four paragraphs, give or take. I'm going off script a little bit. Um, and each one of those have action plans or something like moving parts to those. And so the team internally, we're developing like the longevity plan, the plan that marks out, you know, who does what, how does this get done? So, um, if a team member were to leave or if a team member were to be out sick, the plan can still go on. The consent decree can still be moving forward, whether a person's there or not. So we are looking at long-term planning. We are looking at whose responsibility is what is like, once we get into compliance with the consent decree, you know, the consent decree coordinator position's gone and the police department has to take over that monitoring, the auditing, you know, the project still moving forward. So we're kind of looking at that long-term planning and making sure we have everything in place that the continuous effort, the effort that we've been putting in continues and we don't go backwards when somebody leaves. That loss of knowledge isn't, you know, just completely gone. And we've worked on building the internal, you know, files and documents. So everything's saved in one place. So if a computer goes down, everybody else still has access to that. So we are working on that, you know, just so there's always extra steps. There's always something that covers us if something were to go wrong. So, um, that was really what I wanted to update you on this evening. Um, again, thank you for your continued support as well. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job. Great work.
Mayor and Council, that's the manager's report.
We close the manager's report.
I just had a quick question. Excuse me, before we close the manager's report for the city manager. City managers, can we receive not today, but in the future, near future, an update on the laundromat at seven oh two South Florence and the reconstruction, when that's going to start?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we close manager's report. We move to the special presentation.
At this time, um, Ms. Rachel, State Representative.
Good evening, and this is kind of fancy. I'm gonna try not to tear it up. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Well, good evening, council administrators, neighbors. I am Rachel Proudey and I have the privilege of serving as your state representative. Um, thank you for allowing me to do this special presentation. I was going to do public, uh, comments as well, but as a stickler for parliamentary procedure, I didn't want to speak twice, so I'll take this opportunity if you'll indulge me. Though our methods be they questionable, I definitely want to appreciate Ms. Brooks for standing in the gap for renters like her state representative. Um, and you have my assurance, and I've done this before, I intend the very first bill I'll file from the accession is one that seeks to ban municipalities for considering calling the police for any reason a nuisance. As a person who rents in Ferguson and am a survivor of domestic violence, I think is absolutely repugnant to, to call someone calling or, or abelling themselves of their First Amendment right to petition their government for address a grievance as a nuisance. That's un-American and that's not what we should be doing to be the community that we tell people that we are. Um, so thank you for that. Before I start with the actual slideshow, there are some bills that are of note, uh, particularly as tools in the toolbox for our police officers, one of which, uh, creates the new offense of fleeing. So if a police is trying to stop someone and they continue forward, um, I believe it's like ten miles over the speed limit, that is a felony. It's a class B felony if it I give it presents a risk of harm period. That's a class B felony. If someone or a police officer gets injured, including a police dog, it is a class B felony. If someone dies, like if they hit somebody else or they injure a police officer, that is a class A felony. Um, the second one is Blair's Law. Blair's Law is um, an act that if someone shoots celebratory gunfire, so people who were doing it for the Fourth of July, they squeach by because on August twenty-eighth, um, shooting a gun in the air the first time will be a misdemeanor for which you cannot plead down and on the second time it is a felony. Um, so all you patriots out there that like to shoot on the Fourth of July and other federal holidays on the twenty-eighth, if you get caught doing it again subsequently, you will have a felony for which you cannot plead down. Okay, so House Bill two one one one, why am I here? I promise you it's not for campaign season. This is something that you all are going to want to hear, and I'm not sure if you all have printouts. I hate that you have to crank your neck. But House Bill two one one one, or H B two one one one, expands the power of the state auditor, particularly during the process of a state audit as described in R S M O, or revised Missouri statute, chapter twenty-nine, that pertains to what the auditor can and cannot do. There we go. So currently, under state law, the state auditor's, um, office complaints, uh, but even if the investigation covers or uncovers, uh, wrongdoing, the office is not authorized to move to an audit, um, where there are counties where we already have a auditor, like a county auditor. Or a political subdivision, which Ferguson is, our school district is, fire districts are, we have streetlight districts as well. Those are political subdivisions, such as municipalities, fire district, ambulance districts and sewer districts. All of these government entities would have to invite in the auditor to come do a state audit. Or, uh, citizens would have to do a, a signature process, a little math to it. It's kind of, you have to have ten percent of the people who registered, whatever that is. It's, uh, pretty cumbersome to get and can be very expensive for citizens. Uh, but that's typically how on today, if someone was tried to pursue an audit, that's how they would do it. Also, it would require, and I just went over this, when anybody who lives within the sub, political subdivision would be able to, you know, start the audit process. People who didn't live in the subdivision could not petition for an audit of Ferguson, for example. And then it goes to, you know, you would do that by getting a petition from the go, the government website for the auditor. Once the request is submitted, the petitioner has one year to get the amount of signatures that they're required to get. If they can't get enough signatures, the petition for an audit dies. Uh, once there are enough si, uh, signatures, on the other hand, the petition is considered active. The state auditor will inform the person who initiated the petition as well as the political subdivision to be investigated. The investigation is preliminary for the actual audit. Um, so just because you request an audit at this point and you get the signatures does not necessarily mean that the auditor will come and audit pending the investigation. You can turn, please. So what does two one one change? Well, first of all, it defines improper governmental activity as a reason for an audit. So improper governmental activity as defined in this new law, which again will take effect on August twenty-eighth, um, is any activity, official misconduct, fraud, misappropriation, mismanagement, waste of resources or a violation of state or federal law. Um, so this gives the auditor the authority to audit any political subdivision or government entity or, uh, their contractors as it relates to a particular instance where they suspect activity after an investigation or upon the request of a prosecuting attorney, a circuit attorney, a law enforcement agent, um, which bypasses the current invite requirement. So just so that we're clear now, if the auditor sees something on TV, if, uh, he sees something or they, if it's a, a woman, sees something on the news and decide that, you know, that look, that looks a little suspicious, they do not need an invite. They can, they can proceed to do the investigation at the expense of the city, um, to proceed in doing an audit. Switch, please. Okay, so this is the key, key part for all of us in here because the signature requirement is also one that they bypass. Um, it allows complaints about the, about local government or perceived local government waste, fraud and abuse through the state auditor's whistleblower hotline to be investigated by the state auditor, basically bypassing the current citizen's signature, uh, requirement. It gives Tina power during the investigation process. power during the investigation process. So today, he does not have that. Um, he can ask, you know, the, the city for documents, and they can be like, no, or they can redact certain things from it, um, and cite RSMO six-ten, which is the sunshine law. On August twenty-eighth, the city does not have that option. If he asks for it, you must give it to him because that subpoena power carries the same weight as if it was a judge. It specifies that testimony and records obtained through the subpoenas issued by the auditor are subject to the same confidentiality and disclosure requirements for audit, work papers, and related supportive materials. What that means in a nutshell, which is also pertinent to the last one, you can submit now, people, no matter where they live. So, I can, if I see something a little suspect over in Florissant, can anonymously, uh, contact the whistleblower hotline with whatever evidence, and you wouldn't know that I did it. Those are now anonymous. Um, so, right now, you would know who signed the, the petition, who started the petition that's gone on the, on the twenty-eighth of August. It also adds records relating to reports of allegations and proper governmental activities to the list of records exempt from disclosure under the sunshine law. So even if a city wanted to know who started this, what are they alleging, you're, you're not going to get that. Um, how our investigation started. So anyone, regardless of residence, can submit a report to the state auditor's office using one of the hotlines, which will be at the end of the slide. When the auditor receives an report, there is initial review performed, uh, to determine if a report is credible. Again, just because someone asked or called the hotline does not mean the governor or the auditor is going to do it. I'm sure on the twenty-eighth of August, the auditor is probably going to be inundated with hotline calls. And so, uh, there are still an interview process and things of that nature that will take place. Um, if the auditor deems the allegations in the report to be credible, he may initiate an investigation. Again, there is subpoena power attached to that at the expense of the political subdivision. And if an allegation falls outside of the scope of the auditor's authority, the auditor will refer the matter to its appropriate agency, be it the Attorney General, uh, the federal government, uh, law enforcement, or et cetera. The whistleblower protections, and a whistleblower in this instant is anybody at this point. Whistleblowers may remain anonymous. They may, they want to disclose, they, they have that right, but they may remain anonymous when they file a report to the auditor's office. Whistleblowers generally become a protected person under the law. The law is listed, which is RSMO two eight five point five seven five subsection four, and they list the exceptions there. It is unlawful for an employer to fire an employee for their status as a protected person, and if that occurs, uh, that employee, uh, reserves and has the right to sue for back pay reimbursement of medical bills directly, uh, related to violating the whistleblower protections. So the subpoena power, the state auditor's subpoena power will include requiring a witness to a gift statement. Um, if they don't, the same thing happens that would happen if you did that in court, and a judge required you to come. Taking oath, uh, testimony under oath, and demanding unredacted records or documents. House Bill twenty-one eleven now requires that records or testimony obtained through the subpoena be kept confidential. Uh, this is not the case for an audit in the past. It would all be public record. So they, throughout the process, the whistleblower is protected, and what they said is typically protected. So, what they said can't be traceable back to them for retaliation and et cetera. It also shields records from, records related to the allegation of improper governmental activities from being open to the public through the sunshine law. For example, if I work for XYZ Fire Protection District, and I see some shenanigans and chicanery, and I decide to tell, they'll just find out when the auditor calls them. Um, and so, in order to file a complaint come August, well, now, again, if you do this today, you're gonna have to do the old process. If you wait to August twenty-eighth, this is how you access, um, the hotline. So, uh, for, to report some alleged wrongdoing, to make the request at all for an audit, this is how you contact. This is the one eight hundred number. The emailing and complaints or reports can also be submitted anonymously, anonymously at this, um, on all the avenues really, but if you have things like evidence, or if someone has evidence that they want to submit in with their initial complaint, email obviously is the best way in which to go about doing that. Um, happy to take any questions, be there any.
Councilwoman.
No.
And I'll email this to all of you all, uh, for you to have.
Thank you, Representative.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, who, who sponsored the bill?
Uh, Representative Christopher Nelly. It passed unanimously in both the House and Senate.
Thank you.
Councilman Castle.
Do the petition and invitation methods still exist?
Yes.
Okay, so this is an addition?
It expands it, that's right.
Any other questions for the state representative? Councilman Williams?
Well, this is more of a comment. She already answered that it was passed unanimously. I, I think this bill is dangerous. I understand, you know, you can bypass, but I think a lot of people are going to try to abuse it. And I just hope the, I think the auditor is under his discretion to investigate, and you already said that you guys are going to be inundated with calls. I, I just see a lot of abuse, and hopefully that's not the case, because you can, you know, have political opponents, they're running against each other, and they can call their rival and get investigated for a false allegation.
Sure. So a couple points. I'm not going to be inundated. The auditor's office is going to be inundated. But, uh, it is something that I've stated on social media about the legislative process as it pertains, and I'm stepping into my citizen of Ferguson role. I'm a person who is staunchly opposed to individuals to, did not elect, making, or introducing any bills. We elected you all to do that. Um, with that being said, the auditor himself, um, and this has been an issue with auditors in the past, before this current auditor, we had a Democrat auditor that was a female. All of them have made the same statements about what we've seen, or we've noticed, or we've gotten these allegations of, of waste, fraud, and abuse that were credible, but the statute doesn't have any teeth for us to proceed in investigations. He asked for this, and so, you know, whether or not he's inundated, that's a him problem. Um, he is a statewide elected person. He told people that this is the job he wants, he needs to do his job. We're not here, uh, you know, I don't legislate for the comfort of government. Um, I voted for this proudly, and in, in fact spoke in favor of it. I'm a person who believes if you stay ready, you ain't got to get ready. So even if, if one of your political rivals, you know, want to ask for an audit, one, it doesn't mean that they're going to get the audit, but if you have your stuff on point as a, as a political subdivision, who, you know, waste your time if that's what you want to do. Secondarily, and this is my, my fourth, uh, you all are my fourth stop. Um, and someone, you know, they were, they, I had a councilman that was livid that I voted for and asked me why, and I knew that a lot of municipal governments or political subdivisions would be mad, and I told them, and I'll drop the municipality, and I'll use this one. I was not elected to be the state representative for the city of Ferguson. I was elected to be the state representative for the people of the city of Ferguson. And because they want to have a process to where they, they don't have to spend a lot of money and a lot of time, let's be clear, and this is a law we also tried to get changed. You all have the, the power of the purse. So typically, in how it is now, if somebody wanted to start a petition to get an audit, the city could spend money on a campaign to counter that. Taxpayer money to, and which school districts do, not just for an audit, but if there's a, um, proposition of political subdivisions can vote in a closed session to use taxpayer money for that initiative. Same thing with an audit. The citizens don't have that. This opens, in my opinion, and obviously, the entire legislature's opinion, because it was unanimous, this levels the playing field in the sense, because again, you all get to do that, you know, counter an audit today with taxpayer money. They don't have that power. Um, I believe, to Mr. Franklin's point, I obviously, obviously am a black woman. I am the state representative for one of the most black districts in the state, uh, with the eighty-second, where Dale Woody is being the blackest. I believe that a part of governmental reparations, if you will, is to make sure that marginalized people, that does not just include black, that includes women, gays, uh, lower-class whites, should have the same access to democracy and democratic government policies and, and procedures that we pay for through our labor with taxes as everybody else. That includes all of us. We sit in a position of privilege that these folks don't have. So when I leave office, hopefully in twenty-twenty-six, well, this office, in twenty-twenty-six, when I leave that state rep seat, when I term out, I should have left with something of benefit to these people. We're not elected, and you're new here, like they said, we're not elected, councilmen, to be reelected. We're elected to use the influence that we have to improve the quality of life for the people we serve, and that's why I voted BS for this.
Councilman Castle.
When a political subdivision is audited, there is a fee that is charged. Will the investigations have a fee as well?
It depends on if there's some credible founding findings. Typically, no, uh, but if it's credible, if they have to expend some resources and the findings are credible in that investigation, then yes.
So a non-credible investigation will not have a fee?
As I understand it, yes. And particularly, and here's the interesting thing, and I was thinking about this during the presentation of the consent decree, of course, uh, the Chevron deference has been overturned. And that essentially said that when the legislatures are mute on something, we tend to go to departments to make that gap up, for them to sort of make the decision. With Chevron deference being overturned, the Supreme Court essentially said, well, no, you have to go back to the legislature then to fix that. So the auditor independently can't now say that, oh, you know, municipalities have to pay because we didn't put that in here. Honestly, I don't know if we, if I reread it, I don't know if we put that, we have to pay for an investigation at all. If it is not there, if I'm a, I'm a, because I live here, I'm one, want to save our tax dollars. If I'm a municipality and they try to charge a municipality or a political subdivision for an audit, I would cite, uh, the overturning of Chevron deference to fight that, because we didn't put that, we have to pay for it in there.
But, but a credible, a credible investigation is going to give birth to an audit, which does have cost, and that has a cost. So, you're not getting off free if it's credible, even if you don't get charged for the investigation itself.
That's right. That's right. Um, and to, I, I want to go back to, to your statement. I'm also opposed to the notion of, uh, legislation being brought forth by all council members present. You all get to hold me accountable as your state rep for the bills I pass. And if I went down to Jefferson City and, and passed, you know, pushed legislation to pass High Five Day, or to make the bankhead bounce, the, the Missouri State Dance, you ought to be livid when it's raggedy around here. You all expect me to go and do some work. But also, you know what bills I file and, and can determine whether I, as the representative put it, are speaking to the city or district's issue. You can also see that if I vote for something that you all don't like, if, if there's a lobbyist or some kind of PAC that's paying me to vote that way. We don't have that with y'all. Thing, I, I don't know if, uh, being brought by all council members present, or by one of our employees filing it like that, if they are doing so because it lines their pockets on the other side. There's no way for me to trace that because it's brought legally with file, and I'm not because of things like that. Um, so yeah.
Dr. Proudie, I, I know what you're referring to. Can you be more specific?
Which portion, darling?
Uh, the, the bill. Can you be more specific where you're talking about the, for all? You don't have to name the bill, but just the, the merits of it, because I, I don't think everybody knows what you're talking Not that one.
Okay.
What you're talking about, that it was passed for all?
Oh, all of them here. I'm not talking about in the House. We don't do that.
No, no, the, the bill that you're referring
What he's stating about is when we come to a bill, the mayor reads, without any objections, this bill is here through all the council people, and without any objections, then we move to the next part.
Sure. Now, that's procedure. I'm not speaking of the procedure of how a bill is brought forth, but I'm sort of advocating for, and this is me stepping into the citizen part, not as it's because everyone listening, for you all. I'm, I don't come here to dictate and point fingers and make you all do anything. The verse is actually true. I am your employee. I am your, I don't want anybody listening to think that it's cracking down. But on the flip side of this, unlike in Berkeley, Wissenterra, Edmondson, and the other places I've done this presentation, I live here. I pay taxes here. Y'all are my, my elected folks. Stepping into that, and I appreciate, uh, you, Mayor, for allowing me to be indulged a little bit, I don't know who files what bill, or why, and am able to hold that particular council person accountable for the work that they're trying to do. So I would want to know if someone, you know, filed a bill about, I don't know, uh, just anything, uh, I, I want to ban hairweed from West Florissant to South Florissant or something. I think that's ridiculous, and that someone who would do such a thing probably doesn't need to serve anymore, right? I don't want to hold all the council members, you know, and, and this goes to Ms. Mitchum's point, when we're talking about being cordial and being polite and be, all we know is that all of you all had this bill for it about whatever it was, that the, the community, whatever, uh, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I don't know what, the community director, uh, brought forth. All that the citizens know is that it's brought forth by the council. I want to be able to go and address the person who filed the legislation. You all, she, all as a whole shouldn't have to deal with the repercussions of a terrible bill. I'm not going to be responding when y'all, when people get mad at bills that's filed in Jefferson City. I'm gonna tell you who filed it. I'm not taking no L for that. That's, that's just, that's just me. Uh, obviously, I can't tell you all what to do. I'm just saying.
Thank you. You have another question?
I, I just want to say, I agree with you about that, and I will be introducing legislation at the next council meeting, which will rectify that situation. So, my hope is that, starting with the third council meeting after tonight, we will never hear the phrase "council members present" in this body again.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you all.
State representative.
Thank you. Special presentation, heads of others. We, we don't have any public hearing for tonight. We will move to our consent agenda. We have regular meeting minutes for June twenty-fifth, special meeting minutes for June twenty-first, and June twenty-eighth. I request a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Eyes have it. We don't, we have boards and commission appointments for tonight. We have Nathaniel Arno for the CRB, and Robert Sorison for the pension board. I'm requesting a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Eyes have it. We don't have proclamations for tonight. We will move to our resolutions.
Liquor license? Let's get liquor license.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. The request for liquor license, clerk pidgin.
Okay, I'm trying to speak up. Okay, so tonight, um, we worked on them up to the minute. Um, those that are being presented tonight are Mini Market Three, um, that's at eleven thirty-two North Florissant Road, LA Juicy Seafood at ten seven twenty-two West Florissant, Mimi Subway Bar and Grill at forty-six North Florissant, Vincenzo's, um, at two forty South Florissant Road, I think I have that right, A One Food and Package Liquor at ten six two five New House Ferry. Um, we have Monterey Cigar Bar at four oh one South Florissant, Morello Convenience at ten nine oh one Old House Ferry, uh, Raw Brewery, which is also Ferguson Brew House at four one eight South Florissant Road, Blessed Teresa, um, who just has a temporary rate for their cook-offs. Um, Hollyloo Entertainment at one fifty-five South Florissant Road, Walgreens at one ninety North Florissant. Um, I also have Shaheen Mart, um, which is also Elite Marketing Grill at ninety-one oh one West Florissant. And then last, um, in the process, it's Sam's Meat Market at ninety-two forty-one West Florissant. Um, I remind you, that one, though, um, we did have a recommendation from the PD. So they had, they submitted to you guys a letter, um, a recommendation of some changes to, um, let me pull it up. So they had, they submitted to you guys a letter, a recommendation of some changes to, let me pull it up. Sorry. There we go. You all have some concerns over police activity. The PD, the PD met with them, and they, they submitted to you guys the 60-day action plan, the short-term plan and so forth, which included parking restrictions, loitering signs, toll warning signs, traffic interventions, staff training, photo documentation, police involvement, and then monitoring. And it also included some follow-up that would take place after that, and that was a 60-day recommendation for them.
Councilwoman Lepka.
So I think you're saying that, but my question is, could you remind us when the 60 days started and when they are intended to end?
Um, I, okay, so they had the meeting on June 27.
So we assume that that started on 27th, Chief Doyle, would that be the correct assumption? Okay, he's shaking his head yes, for those who can't see him.
Okay.
So we're looking at July 27th, so we should have a reevaluation next week or earlier this week, like right?
Uh, no, it will be August.
Oh, sorry. I'm doing 30 days. Okay. So at that point, so are we even considering a liquor license right now? Or are we going to wait for the reevaluation, see what kind of progress has been made in that 60 days? And then it's going to be presented to us as council again? Well, what is this?
Um, so, I mean, based off, based off the conversation or the communication that you guys had, I would assume that to be the case for Sam's Meat Market. However, they did submit an application for this year. So I'm just presenting to you those that have gone through the process and they have completed everything from our end. But I did want to point that out because before you did, before you did approval, I did want to point out that there was that recommendation for Sam's Meat Market. So, I mean, you know, it could make sense that you just extend theirs for, at this point, another 30 days or to the end of August, rather than do a new license and then do the new license at your desire for the other ones.
Is there a recommendation of action from our city manager or our police chief?
Chief Doyle, would you please come?
I don't have a report in front of me, however, I do know that Sam's Meat Market have started implementing some of our recommendations since the meeting, so.
Mr. Castle.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the liquor license for Sam's Meat Market for 30 days and that the remainder of the applicants for renewal be approved for renewal.
Mr. Castle, can I entertain a thought before you put that on the floor? If we're looking at extending it 30 days, the 27th would be fourth Tuesday, and I don't know.
Good point. Let's say 45 days.
Well, the problem is, we need to have a discussion. So if we're going to have a discussion, we would be looking at our next council meeting in September to be the 10th. August, no, so August 27th.
30 days.
Yeah. Our next council meeting would be September 10th, so.
Yes, we have one council meeting in August. The August council meeting is August, is August 27th, which, based off this date, would be the actual 60 days. And then the next meeting following that, they, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm seeing their faces and they were looking confused by the dates that you were presenting. And then the next meeting following that is September the 10th.
Let's do, let's do it till September 10th. I don't want to be.
Okay, one at a time, one at a time.
So what I'm trying to say to you, Councilman Castle, is I would like to have time for our police department and our city manager to evaluate your results and be able to make a presentation to us. So that's why I was suggesting that we may make that date September 10th.
I agree. And I amend my motion, Sam's Meat Market's license to be extended through September 10th and the remainder of the applicants to be renewed.
Uh, can, can I just ask you, can I make that two different motions?
Right, okay, sure. Uh, motion to extend Sam's Meat Market's liquor license through September 10th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion to renew all applicants with the exception of Sam's Meat Market.
Is there a second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. We don't have any proclamations for tonight, so we will move to our resolutions. We have resolution number 2024-30. Without objections, we introduce by council members present. Here none, Attorney Thomas, could you please read the resolution?
Thank you, Mayor. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for processing and housing municipal inmates with St. Louis County Justice Center, Clayton, Missouri.
City manager, could you please explain?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, this, I would like to have Troy Doyle come up to the stand.
Chief Doyle. Come to the podium.
Yeah, sorry. I should have said that better.
I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Richmond over the courts here. However, if you all are aware, especially looking at the budget, we spend fifty-some thousand dollars a year to house prisoners at St. Anne. We get a better rate going through St. Louis County, fifty dollars per day. They have medical staff there in the facility. It is, I think it's a better overall deal for us, but I'll let Michelle explain a little bit more.
Clerk Michelle.
Good evening. So we, once Chief Hampton and Chief Doyle came in, we noticed that the contract that we had with the city of St. Anne was fifty thousand dollars we pay a year, no matter how many inmates that we brought over to St. Anne, we paid a flat fifty thousand dollars. We also knew that we can find a better contract, and that's what we reached out to St. Louis County. So currently now, our officers are taking, will take a prisoner over to St. Louis, St. Anne, to the city of St. Anne, and then they'll process them there. And if they have a felony, then they would then come back and take them over to St. Louis County. So that would cut out, that would save a lot of time if we were using St. Louis County. We're also looking at the city of Jennings as well, because they are closer to the city of Ferguson. So the officer wouldn't be off the street. Like, right now, we're an officer processing someone, an inmate to St. Anne, is taking them a little over an hour off the streets away from helping, assisting the citizens here. Also, we looked at, we did a poll, we looked at, in the year of 2020, St. Anne processed 89 inmates for us, so at fifty thousand dollars. Eighty-nine members. In 2021, they did 139. In 2022, they did 214. And if we had paid the fifty dollars like we were asking you guys to approve with the city of St. Louis County, that money would have been ten thousand dollars with 214. In 2023, we did, it would have been twenty thousand dollars. We would have only spent twenty thousand dollars versus the fifty thousand dollars.
The contract with St. Louis.
Any question for Michelle? Councilman Castle.
The contract with St. Louis County does specify that if they require infirmary care, the rate increases to three hundred dollars. Do we have any idea how much of that we utilize?
So currently now, if an inmate requires medical assistance, our officer, after, now this is after they have to take the, practice, I'm sorry, the prisoner to St. Anne, and then St. Anne calls back and say, hey, they need assistance, they need medical assistance. Then the officer, again, would have to come back out to St. Anne and take them to the hospital and sit and wait until they are approved to be fit for confinement or not. So then that's, it's even more money because we're paying the officer that money while he's sitting out there waiting, so it's more than the three hundred dollars.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see how much this is going to end up costing us. So this is, we don't have widespread infirmary needs?
No.
Okay.
No.
And Councilwoman Lepka.
So if we go to St. Louis County, which is what I'm understanding, correct?
Yes.
We go to St. Louis County, it's kind of like an all-in-one type thing. We get them over there, we eliminate unnecessary travel time, we eliminate unnecessary wait time. We get an automatic response to the booking. We get an automatic response to any medical concerns because there is medical staff on site. And we will be able to get our officers back on the streets much quicker because that's, to me, the part that really is important. We, as a council, I've been on this council for a very long time, and so has Mayor Jones, and so has Councilwoman Robinette, and we have heard nothing, but there's not enough police on the street. Well, the problem is, you know, our officers are doing the darnest that they can, but when they're in this process, which is very technical, very lengthy, very time-consuming, there's nothing they can do but finish the process. So if we have an opportunity to shorten this particular process to get them back on the street, we don't have to do this so often because we're, you know, we're getting these, these bad actors off of the, out of the community. So I would say that cost-wise, I see that whether this is, I don't know, I didn't actually see the real cost. Did you, Councilman Castle?
I mean, it sounds like it's going to be around ten thousand dollars. And, and to be clear, while, while this isn't going to eliminate the need for an officer to participate in an application for warrant, that time is still gonna, is still gonna be taken. But if it turns out to be a felony warrant, there won't be the need to move from St. Anne to Clayton because you'll already be there.
So, so cost-wise, that's why I was referring to Councilman Castle. I, I actually haven't seen the exact dollars, but knowing what I have heard from the community, because as Representative Proudly said, we're here to serve the community, and this is what the community is asking me, and the other council members is to get a way to get more police in our neighborhoods. This is a direct way to do that. So I would say, I would like to see the numbers, but to me, even if it was a little bit higher, it would be well worth it. I don't think it will be higher. I think you're going to be bringing us something that's going to be affordable, smart, and efficient. So I'm all for it.
Any other one in has a question for our clerk?
Move to approve.
Clerk Pittman, we need a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Pittman, could you please call the row?
Councilman Castle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Robinette.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lepka.
Aye.
Councilwoman Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Noah.
Aye.
Councilman Palmer.
Aye.
Resolution number 2024-30 passes. We move to resolution number 2024-31. Without objection, we introduce by council members present. Here none, Attorney Thomas, could you please read the resolution?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Standard Insurance Company for employee benefits.
City manager.
Mayor, council, this is our long-term disability. Right now, Mass Mutual, or I'm sorry, Mutual of Omaha, has an increase of over 50%. And so we went out and standard would actually be lower than what we had last year on the same benefit.
Any question for the city manager? Here none, request a motion and a second for approval?
So moved.
Second, Aquita Noah.
Clerk Pittman, could you please call the row?
Councilman Castle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Robinette.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lepka.
Aye.
Councilwoman Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Noah.
Aye.
Councilman Palmer.
Aye.
Resolution number 2024-31 passes. We move to resolution number 2024-32. Without objection, we introduce by council members present. Here none, Attorney Thomas, could you please read the resolution?
A resolution supporting the city of Ferguson, authorizing the city manager to enter into and execute a contract with Spencer Contracting Company for ran-drive concrete street repairs.
City manager Hampton, could you please explain?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I know Cory was up here, and he did talk about ran and the immediate need to fix their street, and this is for that. We went out for bid, and Spencer came in as well.
Councilwoman Noah.
Just to clarify, this is for the sinkhole on ran, which you turn right on Serene, off of.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
A motion and a second for approval?
So moved.
Second, Aquita Noah.
Clerk Pittman, could you please call the row?
Councilman Castle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Robinette.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lepka.
Aye.
Councilwoman Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Noah.
Aye.
Councilman Palmer.
Aye.
Resolution number 24-32 passes. We move to resolution number 2024-33. Without objections, we introduce by council members present. Here none, Attorney Thomas, could you please read the resolution?
A resolution authorizing the city manager of the city of Ferguson, Missouri, to enter into and execute an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission regarding the granting of a temporary construction easement for certain creek improvements.
City manager Hampton.
Mayor and Council, this is just, just a temporary easement while they do the work. Yeah, maybe.
Motion and a second for approval?
So moved.
Second, Aquita Noah.
Clerk Pittman, could you please call the row?
Councilman Castle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Robinette.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lepka.
Aye.
Councilwoman Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Noah.
Aye.
Councilman Palmer.
Aye.
Resolution number 2024-33 passes. Without objection, we introduce by council members present. Resolution number 2024-34. Here none, Attorney Thomas, could you please read the resolution?
A resolution of the city of Ferguson, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to sign and execute a contract with Habitat for Humanity for redevelopment 385 South Harvey Avenue, 361 South Dade Avenue, 333 South Dade Avenue, and 512 Graff Avenue from the city of Ferguson.
City manager, could you please explain?
Yes, ma'am. If you remember, Blake Ashby was one that kind of started this whole process with Habitat for Humanity. I believe it's a grant that they've also received. These houses went up for bid, and they were, they won the bid.
Councilman Castle.
Question for the attorney, this resolution includes a provision to transfer real property presently owned by the city. Can that be done in a resolution, or does it require a bill?
I'm not aware of a requirement that the transfer of real property has to be via bill. The city code does state that if the city manager is going to enter into a contract for the purchase or sale of city property, then it requires the approval of council, which I believe can be accomplished via resolution. So I'm, I'm not aware of a requirement that it has to be in ordinance.
Thank you.
Approving it.
Requesting a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Pittman, could you please call the row?
Councilman Castle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Robinette.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lepka.
Aye.
Councilwoman Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Noah.
Aye.
Councilman Palmer.
Aye.
Resolution number 2024-34 passes. We move to resolution number 2024-35. Without objections, we introduce by council members present. Here none, Attorney Thomas, could you please read the resolution?
A resolution of the city of Ferguson, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to purchase three 2024 Dodge Durangos for the police department and installation of police equipment totaling one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
City manager Hampton, could you please explain?
Yes, ma'am, council. This is through a grant that we've received. And I believe Officer Amos, or Captain Amos, was the one that required a grant, and these are three vehicles that can be used for the city.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lepka.
So, I didn't see anything about a grant, council packet, but I may have a little bit of knowledge if I did. So this isn't coming out of general funds. This is coming out of grant funds.
But this is becoming out of grant funds, and it is not part of any lease.
Okay, so I just want to say that once again, for those in the back, it's coming out of grant funds, not general funds, and not part of any lease for that.
Councilwoman Noah, Captain Amos, don't run off so fast.
Well, first, I just want to thank Councilwoman, because that was my question, you know, and I'm glad that you picked it up. But can you provide us with the name? But can you provide us with the name of the grant?
With the grant, it came from the Department of Justice.
Department of Justice?
Yes. Those $250,000 we got.
You still saying that?
Two hundred, almost $250,000, those $249,000 and something that we got.
Okay, so do you know what you all are planning to do with the money?
That would be the chief. There are certain things that can be done with it, with the rest of the money.
So there's restrictions?
Yes, there's restrictions on the money.
Granted.
So no beer for the break.
Well, great job.
Thanks.
You said the Department of Justice?
Yes, Department of Justice.
They need to give us more of that back, but congratulations. So much money as we paid them. That's, they need to give us more of that.
We're working on that.
Yes, sir.
Councilman, um, Palmer?
To your knowledge, would this grant be eligible to be used for our drone that we're purchasing?
Um, I believe that's already been allocated, but I would have to.
Okay.
I would be the chief on that.
Thank you.
You said 200. Councilwoman Noah, then Councilwoman Lipta?
I apologize. I just, repeat the number you said 230.
249,000, I'm not exactly sure what the rest, 249,000.
Forty-nine.
249,000 and some change is what it was.
So basically, um, I'm sure there are parameters, but I just am hoping that within that parameters, maybe we could have that bicycle program that Chief Doyle's been talking about or even maybe some motorcycles for our officers.
I would have to talk with Chief Doyle about that and see what his other plans are with the rest of the money.
But you know, you tell a woman you got some money left over and I'm going to help you with it.
Thank you, Captain Amos. Thank you very much. Uh, at this time, we're going to request a motion in a second.
So.
Second, Aquita Noah?
Clerk Pittman, could you please call the row?
Councilwoman Lipta?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Aye.
Councilwoman Noah?
Aye.
Councilman Palmer?
Aye.
Councilman Cassoff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Robinette?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Resolution number 2024 35 passes. We have resolution number 2024 36 introduced by council members present. Attorney Thomas, can you?
Wait, are we on 36 now?
We just finished 35.
Okay, I want to object to council members present on 36.
Okay. Any other council member objects?
Me too.
We have two council members who are objecting to resolution number 2024 dash 36. We have the third council member, Councilwoman Robinette, objecting to resolution number 2024 36. Is there another council member objecting to resolution number 2024 dash 36? Councilwoman Lipta want to hear it? Councilman Williams?
I would like to hear it as well.
Councilwoman Noah?
It's here now, someone.
Well, no, I'm not objecting to hearing it. I'm objecting to council members present.
I know. I know exactly what you're saying. Okay, Councilman Thomas, could you please read the resolution?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a cooperation agreement with the city of Delwood, One West Florissant Community Development Corporation and Health and Home St. Louis concerning a transportation development district in the West Florissant Greater Streets District.
City manager?
Mayor, council, I have nothing.
I just would like to share that the last time this was brought up, St. Louis County was given a couple of requests for them to do. And they in turn went to East West Gateway and talked with them to see if they can get funding to get the feasibility study done without Ferguson paying $10,000 and without Delwood paying $10,000. They sent a memo and say they went to East West Gateway and East West Gateway does not do that type of funding for analysis. If it's just was a playing street project, they could have allocated some funding for that. So that's the explanation as to why. Resolution number 2024 36 is back. Councilman, I barely see you.
Is, is this referring to the capital improvement that we got federal grant dollars? Is this the same thing?
No. This pertains to the RISE grant that St. Louis County won from the Department of Transportation for $18.3 million. And they are claiming that to $18.3 million is to resurface, do the repairs and everything on West Florissant, but it has nothing to do with the upkeep. Once St. Louis County does their job, the municipalities has to be responsible for the upkeep. That's the understanding of that.
And this is going to cost us $10,000 initially?
To do the survey, only to do the survey, the analysis as to what needs to be done. Councilwoman Lipta?
So everybody remembers, they made their presentation to us and this was, this is coming back to us because when they made the presentation, that's when they made the comment that they might be able to get East West Gateway to help out costs. And they were supposed to go do the homework on that. And now it's back on our agenda, so apparently we didn't get it. And Mayor graciously expressed how that happened. But if you remember, this feasibility study was going to be put out there to determine what would be the best way to create a taxing district, whether it was going to be property tax, sales tax, or another form. And I can't remember what the third one was. But it was property tax, wasn't it? Wasn't, what was it? Remember mine? Real property? And, uh, no, you can help me. So real property, sales tax. And was it real estate tax? I think it was real estate tax.
Councilman Palmer?
What the firm does is they do a feasibility study. They determine the cost to maintain the infrastructure that's proposed.
Right.
They determine how they want to pay for that, whether it's property tax, sales tax, it could be a variety of taxing methods. Uh, but this was to maintain the portions, uh, of that Great Streets project on West Florissant. This is the exact same bill that we voted on last meeting. I read it correctly.
So, so basically what, what this is doing is, uh, we're paying portion of feasibility study. Once the response happens and they come back to us and make their choices as to how they want to do this, then our citizens will continue to pay in some manner, whether it be a sales tax increase or a property tax increase or anything along those lines. But if we, we have, we have to do this from my understanding because this is a great street grant from the RISE grant. And great street is defined by streets that have the landscaping, the maintenance and so forth, and it has to be paid for. So there, my understanding is if we don't cooperate in this manner, we have the possibility of losing it all together.
No.
No, we won't lose.
We won't lose it all together.
We won't lose the $18.3 million.
We will lose the, the status of being a great street program because then, because that's what he said. He said as a great street program, with, that's how we got the 18 point whatever million. It was great street. Great street was defined as landscaped trees, grass, plants, all that stuff. And this had to be part of it, but it was a part that had to come out of the communities.
Councilman Cassoff and Councilman Palmer?
Okay, uh, first of all, this resolution is for a study which Mr. Palmer asked the representative of the organization that's, that's getting $60,000 to do the study, whether they have ever found that a TDD wasn't necessary. And the answer was no. So they're getting $60,000 and they already know the answer. I'll do that study for five bucks. Do a resolution to me. But seriously, it doesn't change the fact. I do not support taxing poor people to put some flowers in the middle of the street. And that's what we're talking about here. They, they call it maintenance, but let's be very clear. When this street is built, St. Louis County will continue to have the responsibility for maintaining the roadway as they do now. We're talking about the flowers in the median. And I would say this, we, we can look to some other options for that median. For example, there's special grasses that only grow to a certain height and that are very durable and don't require maintenance. I, I flat, regardless of whether they do a sales tax or a property tax, it's going to fall on the people that live in the West Florissant Corridor, which are the least affluent residents of one of the less affluent cities in our county. And I don't support taxing somebody who's worried about buying groceries to put some flowers in the middle of the street. So there's no point in doing a, a, a study to support a bill, to support a tax, which I don't support in the first place.
Councilman Cassoff? Northland Hills is on West Florissant and they're not leased. Nesbit Newton is on West Florissant. They're not leased. So you, you assuming that Northland Hills and Nesbit Newton have poor people and they're not born.
Compared, compared to the region, compared to our county?
You took, you talking about the apartment complex that clustered back there.
I, I, no, Madam Mayor, I'm talking about the residents of that corridor. For, look at the median income of the city of Ferguson as a whole. It's much lower than St. Louis County. It's, you know what? If Ludue wants to have a tax to put some flowers in the middle of the street, that's fine. I don't support taxing people who are worried about keeping the lights on to put some flowers in the middle of the street. That doesn't mean they're dirt poor. I'm not saying that. But we're talking about a lot of people that are, that are working hard every day to make ends meet. And, and we're going to give $60,000 to a contractor to do a study, to tax them, to put flowers in the middle of the street. I'm not going for that.
Uh, Councilwoman Noah, and then Councilman Palmer. Okay, Councilman Palmer was first.
You know, I just wanted to explain to that, to the public, that TDD is not like a citywide tax, like Signis does. Similar to our EDST, it is, has geographical boundaries. So it generally flanks the area of the improvement. So it would not affect the entire city. It would affect people adjacent generally to the, you know, to that improvement on West Florissant. Uh, people have expressed concern about the speeding and the reckless driving. One of my biggest concerns is if we put all these nice flowers and trees in, it's one thing to maintain them. It's one, another thing to replace them when they get destroyed by vehicles. Person that was doing the study in St. Louis County also did say, they didn't necessarily weren't going to not put landscaping in. They just said the plan might change if there's no mechanism to maintain it. They didn't say they wouldn't do it. They just said it might be something less maintenance, you know, intensive. Um, so it's, it was not a condition of the grant either. This was almost more like, uh, hey, we got this great grant to do this road project. Now who's going to take care of it? Um, a good example would be like the Great Rivers Greenway project that goes through the bicycle trails. We have agreements that the city is on the hook to technically take care of some of those, uh, facilities, you know, trimming and overpasses and stuff. You know, I don't know if we're doing much of that, but we just got to be careful when we commit to doing certain things and then holding. You know, it's easy for me to sit here and vote for something that the taxpayers have to pay for. We just got to be, you know, conscious that they probably should be able to develop this project without us bending over backwards to increase our taxes. Furthermore, to do a study that's going to tell us already that, that we should raise our taxes. You know, like I said, the, I asked the guy flat out, has this ever resulted in you saying, no, there's plenty of money to take care of it? And he said, no. So it's just tough for me to swallow a pill of paying $10,000 to tell us what we're already going to find out.
Okay. Councilwoman Noah?
Has Delwood committed to $10,000?
Delwood has agreed to it. However, the funding has not been collected because they waiting on, uh, Ferguson. And you might as well know Jennings pulled out because Jennings did not believe in what this survey was going to do. And Jennings believed that they only had one block of this. And so they believe they can take care of it themselves.
Because, uh, in St. Louis City, there are mediums and they don't have a grid. And I'm looking at the minutes from 6:11 when the presentation was given to us and it states on here in the minutes that additionally, he noted that while the county could maintain the sidewalks and streets, they lack the capacity to maintain the grid. So, I mean, do we have to have the mediums? I mean, is that, I mean, I know it's beautiful and I'm not against it before. It's just the concept. Is that, can, can we afford that in? So that's my.
Councilwoman Lipta? So, you know, I think, so this was a big heap of mind during all of the town halls. Like when we went to those ones in Delwood's community center and so forth. Cause they were showing all these pictures, all these beautiful streets and all these blooming trees and flowers and everything else. And I said to them back then, who's paying for that? And they, oh, and they didn't have an answer. Well, you know, that's, and then I kind of feel like this is a bait and switch type of thing. You come in and tell us, we finally got the grant. If you yahoo, let's go do this. And it's great. We are excited about it. And you show us all these pictures and you tell us, this is what it's going to look like. Well, when you tell someone, this is what it's going to look like, and you tell us we got the grant, you will lead us to believe that that grant includes everything that picture looks like. To then come back and say, it's going to look like this, except we made those really, really pretty. And if you want those, you have to pay for them. And that's exactly what they're doing here. And they're saying to us, well, we want to do a study to see how we pay for that. Can we do property tax and do these sales tax? Well, whatever tax you do, you're taxing the people in that taxing district. And that is not a taxing district that has a very high ownership rate. So the P, if they chose to do a property tax, you're putting that directly onto the minority of people who own in that area, which isn't fair. And if you make it a sales tax, you're putting on everybody, which that's not what they asked for. And I also would go back, way back to when we had Stephen Garrett on this council. And he and I have worked together, we're still working together. There are plenty of things that we could do with Missouri Botanical Gardens. As Nick said, there are grasses that can be brought in. You can go to a prairie. You know, if you go down I-170, Albarisi, there are whole grounds around them is prairie reinforcement. You could do so many things in those areas. And we have an amazing group of volunteers that do flowers in Ferguson. Anyway, I don't know. I'm not telling, saying they should take it on because I'm not trying to put it on their back. But there's a lot of organizations. There's a lot of service night needs for younger people. There's opportunities to work with the Arbor Society for Grants. There's opportunities to work with Missouri Botanical Gardens for Grants. There's opportunities to bring in prairie, prairie grasses. And you all have to do is put signage on it. This is prairie grass area. I think that this is completely unnecessary. I think it's unfair to those citizens. And I think this council and future councils can get creative to do something nice along that area.
Okay. You fine, you were fine. Uh, partnership did go to, to East West Gateway. There was no funding there. Uh, we did get a memo, asked to put it back on the agenda. So let's decide now, whatever. Okay, let's take a vote.
Don't you need a motion for that?
Yeah, you need a motion, a motion in a second.
Mayor, may I make a motion that we take a vote on this particular resolution?
Is there a second?
Are you voting to?
A motion for what?
I thought she said we needed a motion to take a vote. That's what I was thinking. Yeah, I'm, I, I think right now is, are we going to approve it or?
Oh, we're going to approve it.
Okay.
It's motion, uh, it's resolution 24 dash 36. If you don't approve 24, 36, you don't need to go to 2024 37 and it is dead. No one has made.
I made a motion. Did I make it incorrectly? Second, Aquita Noah?
So for clarity, I mean, you're, you're making a motion to approve resolution of 2024 dash 36?
No, no, no. I. I was under, I have, I understood the mayor to say that she needed a motion for a vote. So that's what I was trying to do, if that's not correct, then I remove my motion from the vote.
Okay, cause that, what she's looking for now is.
Or approve, or do you want to approve this?
So we just kind of use too many words at that moment.
It's a different.
Will you do a roll call then?
Yes. Is there a motion in a second?
So move the Queen of No.
Okay, that's a motion, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? The motion dies on the floor. That's it. Right, but it's, it's, it's. Okay, let's move to resolution number 2024, 37. Since the resolution 2024, 36 died on the floor. Clerk Pittman, do we need to go to the formalities or?
Yes, for transparency and for clarity and a record, yes.
Okay, without objections, we're introduced by council members present.
But Mayor, I, I'll say this though, if we know that we don't want to, you don't have to actually read it and all the rest of it, you can just postpone it indefinitely.
I'd say let's do the motion.
I, I move to remove 24 dash 37 from the agenda.
Second.
It been, it has been properly moved in second. Are you ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, it's gone. We move to resolution number 2024, 38.
Yes.
Without objection, we are introduced by council members present.
Yes.
Here none. Attorney Thomas, could you please read the resolution?
A resolution selecting a contractor for the installation of 110 speed humps throughout the city of Ferguson, awarding the contract, said contractor, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city.
City Manager Hampton, 110.
Yes ma'am. So we had made our original list and then Traffic Commission looked at it with the data used. And then it came back to us.
Audience. The council cannot hear. So we ask that you would keep it down, thank you. Now, City Manager.
So we made a motion to see if we could get, uh, go up for bid for our P for, um, speed humps. We made, uh, we had 110 locations at that point or 108. Then we took it to Traffic Commission's, Traffic Commission looked at the data and, and, and then adjusted it. And then we, they came back and I think they had, we added actually a few more. Knowing the city, the way we do, we know some of these cut through streets and that as well, that's why we added a few more. Um, there's a list on here as well. Um, it's not broken down by ward. Um, but, and I don't know the ex, well, it's not broken down by ward, but on our new roads going forward, if it requires a speed hump, that will be put in when we do that road. So if your road's not on this and it's getting redone, because there are some streets that will be redone with the, um, overlay with ARPA funds, they will get the speed humps if they're, they're needed.
It's logical to put to speed humps on when the road is.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lippa.
So Mayor, this was the meeting that you were out of, not going off, that last meeting that I introduced this. Um, and so basically what had happened is for those who may not understand, the, the police department, I'm sorry, the city manager did give us a list of streets. But we wanted as a traffic commission to have data to back up the choices that we came up with. So we pulled out all of the reports that we have gotten over the last year and a half, two years from our Jamar device. And we went through each, each report. And we looked at the streets that were having the highest. And so we prioritized the highest speeds we saw on streets and then worked out. And then as, and of course, there were a lot of overlap, there were a lot of streets that were on his list that were also on our list. So then when we got through, we integrated those two lists. And when we got through all of those, then we sat, then we went down and added a few more because we saw some more streets and we also, I also reached out to Chief Doyle to get input from him, so he also gave us input. So over a course of two complete meetings with Traffic Commission, we did sit down and really analyze this and go over it very much. So the lady that was in here earlier, Highmont, will be seeing some speed humps. Um, and we were encouraged to ask for a very aggressive speed hump. So it should be about eight feet wide and it'll be five feet tall. Um, one, there's two things on the resolution that's being presented. We say 110, but the resolution said 109 in our paperwork. The other thing that I'm a bit concerned that I didn't see is that as we install these speed humps, we also need to put in the, the signs. So when you're coming up on it, there should be a sign that says, speed hump ahead. The cost of 110 signs is going to be something. I don't know how substantial it is, but it's going to cost something. So I wanted to know, is that being considered alongside this particular resolution? Because don't those two things have to be simultaneously?
So it is in, it's in there. So they, the signage.
Is part of that 200 and something, okay, I.
And so is the arrow pointed.
Okay, so I scanned, I, I've done so much work on this, I scanned the other stuff, so.
So, and also another one little small correction, not trying to correct anybody, but the length of travel is 10 feet by five inches.
I thought we had eight feet on some of them.
But we went and measured what we had.
Hmm.
And to keep in uniform, we went with the 10 feet.
That is not a problem with me, I, I was going with eight feet because that's what I had submitted, but 10 feet's what you came up with. Um, but yes, so, so I would be very pleased to make a motion.
Before, Councilwoman Noah.
Okay, so a few things, thank you because I am happy to see this list, maybe residents or, um, I'm a little disappointed that Hapron is not on this list or, um, Nesbit, but because we're purchasing 110 speed humps and the list has 109. That means there'll be one left over and maybe one of those streets, I'm hoping that it's helping, that we can get that speed hump installed for Chief because it really needs to be on Hapron. Um, the next thing is the speed humps that are on Dade. Okay, so can you compare this speed hump length to the speed humps that are on Dade? Are they similar, Chief? Or, I mean, it's similar side.
Yes. If you, if you travel on Ford. Yeah, so Ford is really more the speed hump that we're going for on Dade. Um, we, we may be increasing the heights on Dade. Um, we're writing now the Jamar device, I believe I called it right, uh, is, um, doing its data collection, so we may have to increase the height on theirs. That's why we went up, right now they're four inches on Dade. Um, that's why we went up to five inches here. If we go on Ford, they're a little, they're high, a little higher and they have a little bit more of the stretch.
Right, well, thank you, because I'll tell people that, because they're asking like, what is the speed hump going to look like? I hope you all also allocated some funding for additional signs because you know, people hit signs.
No, they have not.
They have not, okay. But again, thank you for this resolution and I'm hoping with that one additional, we can at least get that speed hump on Hap, please, thank you.
Councilwoman Lippa.
Just very quickly, so this is only phase one, Traffic Commission is still, uh, submitting reports for these streets with our Jamar device. Still, uh, going after information and the data. So as we get that data and as we, uh, identify those problem areas and continue to do so, uh, we will continue to submit requests to the city council and the city staff. And, uh, I understand your desire for help for in Nesbit Newton, but when we did those studies, they were nowhere near, uh, the other areas of high concern. So that's why we didn't see him on phase one.
I'm requesting motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
Clerk Pittman, could you please call a roll?
Councilwoman Lippa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Williams?
Aye.
Councilwoman Noah?
Aye.
Councilwoman Palmer? Councilwoman Cassoff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Robinett?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Resolution number 2024 dash 36 passes. We move to bills for first reading. Bill number 7284, without objection, we introduce by council members present. Attorney Thomas, could you read the bill by title only?
An ordinance of the city of Ferguson, Missouri affirming its method of disclosing potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests.
City Manager?
This, with this being the first reading, I have nothing.
Okay. Bill number 7285, without objection, we introduce by council members present. Attorney Thomas, could you please read the bill by title only?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Ferguson, Missouri to enter into and execute an agreement regarding the transfer of city-owned property.
City Manager?
Again, with this being the first reading, I have no comment or nothing to add.
Thank you. Without objection, we introduce this bill by Councilman Cassoff and Councilman Palmer. Here none, city, uh, here none, Attorney Thomas, could you please read the bill by title only?
An ordinance amending certain sections within Article III of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Ferguson relating to nuisances.
City Manager?
I have nothing to add to this.
Bill number 7287, without, in, without objections, we are introduced by Councilman Cassoff. Here none, Attorney Thomas, could you please read the bill by title only?
An ordinance amending certain sections within Article V of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Ferguson relating to boards, commissions, and committees.
City Manager?
At this time, I have nothing to add.
Bill number 7288, without objection, it will be introduced by Councilman Cassoff and Palmer. Here none, Attorney Thomas, could you please read the bill by title only?
An ordinance amending certain sections within Chapter 37, Article II of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Ferguson relating to solid waste.
City Manager Hampton?
At this time, I have nothing to add.
We move to bills require second reading, we don't have any. Do we have any unfinished business?
Yes, Mayor, I have unfinished business. So, um, on August 23rd of 23, the council approved land on Hearn for the Performance Food Group Development. And in the meeting, we were supposed to have a meeting with the residents, the developer and the city, um, so that they can ask their questions. And so the developer did show up, the meeting was 9:27 of 23. Unfortunately, the city wasn't prepared at that time, there was a conflict, there were two meeting, meetings I remember because it was on Zoom. And I had two meetings that night, and so we were supposed to reschedule. So, um, August 9th of this year, the city manager and I met with the residents on Hearn and they asked their questions and they have not heard back. And, and it's important that they hear back, it's important that their concerns are heard because they live right across from the back of that development and I've supported that development. And, you know, I thought that everything would go smoothly and the residents would get their meeting with the developers and they have not. And, um, I just, you know, we need to bring some type of resolution so we can move forward with this. So, um, that's my unfinished business.
So what you are stating is you all are still waiting on a meeting with the developer or the president of Performance Food or a business, of someone from that business to come and talk to the residents on Hearn Avenue.
Well, I'll, for clarity, on April 9th, Chief and I met with the residents because the meeting had passed. And he listened to their concerns and so I'm waiting for follow-up from that meeting. Well, they are waiting for follow-up from August 9th, I mean, April 9th of this year, which has been over 90 days, so, you know, there should be some follow-up at this point, but. So that's, is that?
I, Mayor, I, I can reach out again to Maude and get, try to see if I can move things. I reached out to her last month after we talked. So I'll reach out to her again.
Councilwoman Lippa, so Councilwoman Noah, so you were there, uh, Chief Kempin was there, residents were there. Was there representation from the development group? No?
We, we've been in contact with them, no.
But I guess the thing to me is, I, you know, first of all, it's up to you for following through on that. Um, but I mean, when they made their presentation, they were all about, they were going to sit down with the residents, they were going to do all this other stuff, you know, and I'm pleased that you guys, YouTube did follow through on that. But I really feel like they need, they need, their residents wanted to ask that developer questions directly to them.
Well, they did show up for the initial meeting, they did, on Zoom, the developer was there, but it's just that there were conflicts.
Easy to be there. They need to make time.
Well, no, but no, what I'm saying is there were conflicts with the city.
Well, at this point, so to understand what you are saying. And the city manager has said he's going to reach out to them and set up another lead. Is that okay?
I mean, that's her.
Okay, do we have any other unfinished business?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Palmer?
Uh, City Manager Hampton, could you have a report for the next, uh, during your manager's report, the next meeting? Just kind of detailing the finals, the final details of the ARPA-related Mill and Overlay Project.
Correct, I will.
So like what streets, um, if it's gone out for bid, yes, I think that's a different process than typical since we have Wise Design Group kind of, I think they're soliciting bids instead of us. So if you could just get us an update on like bid solicitation, uh, final documents and implementation, obviously weather permitting. Um, and then if you could also find out which of those streets are going to have the speed bumps because once this list is gone public, we're going to have people outraged, they're not in the list. And then we can tell them, you're getting speed bumps and a new street, so I want to hear it, so. Uh, that would be helpful at the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other old business, unfinished business? Here none, we move to new business, any new business? I have new business, I would like to ask the council if we going to submit bills. Uh, for example, if we meet on the second and the fourth Tuesday of the month, can we get all our bills submitted the first week and the third week? So, uh, the city clerk would have time to put all this together. That'll give them more time. We do make a lot of changes if we submit a bill. Once we send it out to each other, everyone got to come. And she's reading all the time. So if we could try to streamline our process for her, I think that would be great.
Kind of already have to do that because the agenda's posted in the first week on Friday.
Right, it is, but if we could try to get it to her by Monday.
Okay.
That'll give enough time.
So you're just asking for like a, the bill be submitted seven to 10 days at least prior to the next meeting?
Right, if we could do that, that would be good. Okay, any other new business? We move to miscellaneous, let's start with Councilwoman Noah.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I was going to mention the overlay street repair, but I'm glad Councilwoman Palmer passed because there has been a lot of questions about the project and what's going on. So, uh, thank you for that, I would like to thank all of the staff for the Ferguson Fourth of July celebration, it was hot. But we had a good time, um, I got my exercise pants passing out here. Um, and the stop signs, at the last council meeting when we talked about the speed humps, when the resolution was brought to the floor, um, we talked about the stop signs and working with the city engineer and Wise Design Group. And so is there anything to say about that?
So my understanding of the process is it still goes to Traffic Commission, Traffic Commission brings it to me, then I take it to the engineer.
So.
And so that part has to happen.
Okay, so you all are working through that, okay, thank you, because you know.
We've submitted, so. Go ahead. Um, so I went back to the Traffic Commission with your requests. And after hearing from Mr. Cassoff, we didn't go back and so we fixed that. So they are back on the list. Um, and as soon as we know what's going on with the city. And as soon as we know what's going on with the city planner, then we will, that's one of the first things. So we have a, we have a ongoing wish list that once that person's hired, I'm going to be the first one in his office going, hi, here's my list. Anything else, Councilwoman?
Yes, yes, then last night we had a meeting, the Southwest Neighborhood Association had their quarterly meeting. And we'll have another meeting in October and I'll send updates about that. But it was informative, I talked to a resident here tonight, you know, they have concerns, of course. The Nesbit Newton meeting is tomorrow, Wednesday, July twenty-fourth at Nesbit Newton Park. Please bring along cheer. And also the Forestwood Neighborhood Association meets every first Tuesday at seven PM at Imaeus Bible Chapel. The address is nine hundred Highmont F. Barnett. Other than that, thank you all and everyone continues to be safe.
Mayor, can I add one thing to it?
Yes.
So I know police officers were supposed to be at your meeting last night, but we had an incident. And, and I just want everybody to know, they did not forget. It's just we had an incident, we need officers on the street.
Of course, Chief, thank you. I'll say that later. Thank you, Councilwoman Nor. Councilman Palmer?
Nothing.
Councilman Cassoff?
Yes, this Thursday, not tomorrow, but the day after, at six o'clock, I'm going to have cheers, jeers, and beers on my front porch. And what that means is I'm going to buy a case of beer and put it in the, put it in the cooler. Any of you or anybody else who lives in Ferguson is welcome to come by the house. I'll be sitting on the front porch. If you've got something you want to talk about pertaining to legislation or if you have a personal issue you want help with, or if you just want to come by and chat, I'll be there from six o'clock to nine o'clock on Thursday at one-twenty-five Royal. Now I've got to get up in the morning, so it's going to be cut off at nine o'clock sharp, even if we're in the middle of the greatest conversation ever. But anybody wants to come by is welcome. And if nobody comes by, I'll just drink all the beer and go to bed. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Cassoff.
And by the way, the invitation does include my colleagues here, if anybody wants to.
Thank you, I'll, I'll be at the ERB room.
Your honor, your side, just, Councilwoman Robinette.
I have nothing to say, thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Lepka?
So I just want to kind of address a few things from public comments. Ms. Moore, you mentioned, okay, no, I just wanted to go through it real quick. So Ms. Moore on Highmont, I understand that you're concerned for the speeding there. That's why we've got some, we've got them specifically chosen for the speed humps. Mr. Johnson, you talked about the islands on West Floris. And unfortunately, Mr. Johnson, that project is not a city project, that is a federal project. So we're working alongside federal funds for that. Ms. Johnson's speeding on Highmont and Kirk, we have speed humps coming in your area and I'm very sorry you've had some issues with your yard. That's, that is all I have there. Also, I will say that concerning some of the other comments during public comments, there's two sides to every story, so please keep that in mind because as, it's very clear and there is surveillance cameras to prove it. Also want to go through, let's see, and thank Mr. Blake Ashby for starting Resolution Twenty-two-four dash thirty-four. I want to thank the city for an amazing Fourth of July celebration. And I also want to remind all of you, for many years you've been asking for speed humps. We finally got it done, there's going to be a hundred and ten of them. All of a sudden, in your neighborhood, you're going to hate them. So please do not kill the messenger, you're just going to have to get used to it. And remember, you asked for this.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Lepka. Councilwoman Graham?
Yes, so Ms. Councilman Lepka answered some of the questions that you guys have with Mr. Thompson. But I want to commend Jamil Franklin. So instead of talking about FNIP, he's doing something to help it in the library. I didn't realize that the application can be complicated for some people because you have to take a picture with your phone, maybe upload that to an email and then attach those pictures. To me, that's something I do every day, but for a senior or someone that's not computer literate, that can be a challenge. So I just want to commend him for going to the library and helping people do their application. Secondly, the ARPA funds, before I even got here, it was laid out with the ARPA funds were four. So FNIP did their paperwork and they were awarded those funds. And so, no one can have, in order for someone to be racist, they have to have power over you. FNIP is a nonprofit organization, they don't have power over you. And so if you flip the switch, let's suppose the FNIP president, all those people were black, we wouldn't have this conversation. So I'm going to call it like I see it. I speak for the people of Ferguson, I'm an elected official. When I see wrongdoing, I'm going to say it. So America is the greatest country on God's green earth. Did this country have slaves? Absolute. I'm a descendant of slaves, but guess what? On June nineteenth, we celebrated the freedom of slaves, it's a national holiday. Two years in a row. So what I'm trying to say is you can't keep dwelling on the past, you got to move forward. And if we keep dwelling on the past, that's where we're going to stay in the past. We have to move forward. So it's the same people that come in here and talk about FNIP, guess what? Start a nonprofit organization, when ARPA funds come up, submit your paperwork so you can get those funds. But to keep ragging on the organization that submitted the paperwork and got the funds and did everything they were supposed to, was supposed to, is, you know, that's not right and it's not fair. But every meeting, the same people are here and we're talking about that. Let's move on. We're having shootings in our street, but we're talking about ARPA funds from two years ago. Let's stop that. We have a crown jewel in our neighborhood, Flow Valley. So we need to give opportunity to our young people. They can basically go to school for free, they'll pay for your books, they'll give you a stipend. And so instead of shooting dice in a parking lot, ask our young people, let's go to Flow Valley. You don't have to go to college, they have trades. Opportunity is the great equalizer in this country, but we have to stop this pettiness. I'm not originally from Missouri, I'm from the East Coast. This would be my tenth year in Missouri. So when I came from Atlanta, I was working at Boeing as a software engineer. Two weeks later, the Michael Brown situation happened and I was like, oh God, where did I move to? What is a Ferguson? Ten years later, I'm a city councilman. I don't think that's a coincidence, God put me here. So we, we need to come together, stop the pettiness and let's move forward. The last comment I want to make is Erica Brooks. I didn't say her name, but since she threw me under the bus, I want to talk about that. No, I want to talk about that. You guys have a First Amendment right to petition your government and I'm fine with that.
A point of order. A point of order. A point of order. You cannot be a councilperson.
She called me out, I want to set the record straight.
Everybody give me a point of order.
We can agree to disagree, but you don't have to disrespect me. I heard you out for ten minutes, I heard you out for ten minutes.
Give me a point of order, please. Can I get a point of order? Can I get a point of order?
I am not sorry for you disrespecting me.
I just need a point of order. I just need a point of order. Uh, don't, stop, stop, everybody just stop. Everybody just stop. I need a motion in the second, to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor of the meeting, this adjourn?
Was that Robinette? Was that Robinette? You adjourned.